In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 10, 2014. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to The Nutley Sun, The Star-Ledger, The North Jersey Herald-News, and The Nutley Journal, mailed to The Nutley Tapship Clerk, advertised in The Nutley Sun on January 16, 2014, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all here present and in recognition of the importance that we perceive, it is requested that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or silenced for the duration of this meeting. Thank you. Please stand for the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As this meeting is actually the reorganization meeting for the Board of Education, I'd like to start with a statement of the results of the annual election. On Tuesday, November 4, 2014, the annual school board election for the Nutley School District was held. Voting was conducted for the election of three members to the Board of Education for a three-year term. The results of the election were as follows. Candidates for the three-year terms were Frederick Sklera with 2,831 votes, Salvatore Ferrara with 2,621 votes, Lisa Dancheck-Martin with 2,675 votes. Candidates elected were Frederick Sklera, Salvatore Ferrara, and Lisa Dancheck-Martin for a three-year term. A copy of this report will be entered from the official minutes of the Board of Education. At this point, I'd like to administer the oath of office to each of the new board members. Ms. Martin, would you join me at the microphone? I state your name. I, Lisa Dancheck-Martin, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the same and to the governments established in the United States, to the same and to the governments established in the United States, and this state, and this state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people, so help me God, so help me God. I state your name. I, Lisa Dancheck-Martin, do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I possess the qualifications, that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law, prescribed by law, for the office of member of a Board of Education, for the office of member of the Board of Education, and not disqualified as a voter, and not disqualified as a voter, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, and that I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, impartially and justly, impartially and justly, perform all duties of that office, perform all duties of that office, according to the best of my abilities, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, so help me God. Congratulations. And this is the plaque that was delivered today on behalf of Christopher Rickert. I state your name.
I, Salvatore Ferrara.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution, of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the same, to the same, and to the governments established in the United States, and to the governments established in the United States, and this state, and this state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people, so help me God, so help me God. I state your name.
I, Salvatore Ferrara.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law, that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law, for the office of member of a Board of Education, for the office of member of a Board of Education, and not disqualified as a voter, and not disqualified as a voter, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, and that I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, impartially and justly, impartially and justly, perform all duties of that office, perform all duties of that office, according to the best of my abilities, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, so help me God. Congratulations.
I just up the state that we asked if we could do this after we out of the band because that's what we're here for, but state statute required this to be done first, so I'm apologizing for it.
The students are getting to see government at work. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Frederick Sklera.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance, and I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the same, to the same, and to the governments established in the United States and this state, and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people, so help me God, so help me God. I state your name.
I, Frederick Sklera.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I possess the qualifications, that I possess the qualifications, prescribed by law, prescribed by law, for the office of member of a Board of Education, for the office of member of Board of Education, and not disqualified as a voter, and not disqualified as a voter, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, and that I will faithfully, and I will faithfully, impartially and justly, impartially and justly, perform all duties of that office, perform all duties of that office, according to the best of my abilities, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, so help me God. Congratulations.
Mr. Conisella.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Kazinsky.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Sklera.
Here.
Mrs. Spazado.
Here.
At this point in time, we will conduct the election of officers, and I am accepting nominations now in order to the office of President of the Board of Education.
Mrs. Jamins, I would like to put the name forward of trustee Tom Spazado as the president of the Board of Education. I think he has the concern, caring, dedicated board member for the years he's been on, and I look forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for president? There are being no further nominations. It is declared that the nominations are closed. Mrs. Kukuzo, please take the vote while President of the Board of Education, Mr. Conisella.
Mr. Conisella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
No.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Ms. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Sklera.
Yes.
Mrs. Spazado.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Spazado, and please assume your chair.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we're going to ask for a nomination from the floor for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Spazinsky for the office of Vice President. We go back over, well, over 30 years, 40 years, not 40, I don't think yet, from the first Board of Ed election, the only election ever had a snowstorm shut it down in the history of Nutley, to be able to find a longtime partner in the fire service, and thank you for being a great past president, I like to extend full homage.
Mr. Conisella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes, and I'd like to thank the past president for his great service over the last couple of years. He's been a tremendous asset to this Board of Education, and we welcome him as a new president, but thank you for his tremendous service.
Yes.
Ms. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Sklera.
Yes.
Mr. Spazado.
Yes, and I would like to echo with Mr. Riley repeated, Charlie has been the backbone for the last couple of years with us. I'm sure he's going to continue as my, as Vice President, as active as he's been as president, so thank you, Charlie, and thank you, everybody.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call in trustee Fred Sklera to acknowledge the man. If you can read the resolution first, take it from there. Be resolved that the Board of Education recognizes the outstanding performance given by the Nutley High School marching band at the competition, parade, pregame, and halftime shows at the 2015 Gator Bowl in Jacksonville, Florida. The Board of Education hereby commends them for the honor and recognition they have brought to themselves, their families, their school, and their community. So, first, I have to say, as I follow the Facebook postings and parents online, I was quite ecstatic. Mr. Kazinsky was the president at the time. I called him right away and said, Charlie, listen, you don't know what's going on right now, but the band is doing tremendous. I was excited for nine trophies, two plaques, and then $10,000. How can you imagine that at the end of the day? I would say, and I've been around the band and was in the '70s, and I told a few stories to a couple of people. When we came in, Mr. Herbeck used to play the record when they performed at Shea Stadium for between a Jets game, and that was our excitement when we got there, and I think this is much larger than that, probably the largest thing that's ever occurred. I'm so proud of all of you. I want to thank them also. Also, I reached out for Mr. Riley over the weekend. He's here someplace. There he is, because everybody's still else on the road. Reached out for Mr. Riley and said, listen, I've talked to the president of the board. We have to do something right away. These kids did a great job, and I want to also not have it, but I also want to see if we could show something tonight so that everybody can see it. It winds up on tape, winds up on Channel 77, shows what our programs are doing. I couldn't be prouder. I could thank each one individually. I ran over to yesterday's to kind of catch part of it, but it did show me, I saw you pregame with no sound, and we cheered and watched you march on the field, but it was truly an honor. We're proud of all of you. I'm sure some of the other board members are going to have comments also, but coming from the band, being your representative of the music program, the sports, to your team over there, Mr. Riley, and the whole team that's over there, I see them all. You know, the Board of Ed on the whole has put a lot into the music program and the arts, and I talked to, you know, Mr. Morella, I see Mr. Vicarello standing over there. I talk to him all the time, what's going on, and follow you, and I'm always at the breakfast to make sure I keep him up the year with you and support it, but I want to let you know this board has been great in supporting the arts in this district. Mr. Riley was a great addition to that, and I talk to him all the time. I can pick up the phone and call him, he answers me back, and he's always supporting the programs. That's what it about. Parents that are here, I know about band camps and traveling and doing things. It's not without the parents. The kids aren't as successful, the music program isn't, but that's what it takes about Nutley. In Nutley, we have families involved, it makes a big difference, so thank you to all the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Sklera, and thank you to the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to come in, and it was literally in the middle of the night when Mr. Sklera reached out and came up with the idea to present this, and I think just the, just the way that this room is set up right now sort of typifies the community spirit that, that you've all welcomed me into and I've become a part of. It's just an absolutely amazing program that, that was here and that we're going to continue to foster and build. I want to introduce the staff and thank again the parents, you know, as marching band parents, as athletic parents, you know what dedication goes into in the countless hours and running back and forth to rehearsals, the late nights, and the dedication that your children put into it. And as the administrator for, for the district, I really appreciate everything that, that Marie and Jeff are doing and have done for the program. But I was about saying that the instruction that the students get gets them to where they are, so I'd like to introduce the staff. Ms. Card for the color audience here. The marching band assistant director, Mr. Vincent Vicarello. And you all know the next man goes without introduction. What he's done for this community and the time that he gives to, to the students, to the programs is second to none anywhere. Great pleasure, Mr. Mayola.
Mr. Mayola will say a few things, but thank you again, and thank you to Board of Education for allowing us this opportunity.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for this gracious event, everyone. It's really, it's a bit overwhelming, you know, I'm a very simple person. You know, and the kids will tell you very much so that I just compartmentalized, because we got through, you know, leaving and packing the bus, and then we made it down there through all the traffic and bad weather, and then we just kind of went step by step, and you get to a certain point where, you know, it's, you sit back and you look at the things that we were able to accomplish in that week. It was just truly amazing, and, you know, I, I think of, the first thoughts that come to mind as I stand in front of you is when we were separated from the rest of the group that was going to perform at halftime at the Gator Bowl, we were underneath, and all of a sudden, like, the Iowa marching band kind of, like, literally threw us, and there's a lot of them, right, and they're really there. There was this piccolo player that was about six feet. I don't know, I don't know how he got his hands on that instrument, I mean, just they engulfed the whole thing. Look out, and our kids are, like, they're just interacting with those kids and talking to them about, well, I'm sure it was music, I'm sure it was college, I'm sure it was a number of things, and all of a sudden, the Marine band comes by, right, and they're, because they were, they were after us, I might say, I might add, but, so the Marine band comes by, and all of a sudden, our kids just, like, walk over and start talking to them, and you can see, like, they're fingering notes, they're doing things, and, like, like, that interaction, to me, was really the special moment, because that's the stuff that, like, all right, we've done our field job a lot, and we've done very well this year, and I'm really proud of what they achieved, but I'm more proud of who they've become as young ladies and gentlemen. So, you know, that to me is the stuff that I take home, and I remember, that, that makes truly what we do here so special, it's those moments. So, thank you for your support. We'll continue to be there for you guys in the very distant future, and we really developed this program into something special, so thank you very much.
At this time, any board members have any comments?
Thank you. I'm in the microphone, I'm stroking anyway. I just want to put things in their proper perspective. When I was first elected in 2004, most of these young adults here were either in preschool or in first grade, so they've come a long way, and so has this program, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention two people that really stand out to me in where we were in 2004 and where we are today. I met John Holland at a Paramus, Nutley football game in Paramus when we were carrying old dilapidated equipment onto a football field. I also met Rosemary Costa, who's been with the program forever and ever, and thank you so much for what you do and what you've always done. You're a tremendous asset, a tremendous person, thank you. But we decided as a board that year to shift $125,000 from the football program to the arts program, and being a football town, you can imagine what we went through when we decided to move that money out of football to the arts, and look where we are today. Mr. Mayola was not part of the team back then, he came shortly thereafter, and he's just done an outstanding job. I'm so proud of the parents, the volunteers, the kids, and I understand the effort that it takes to put that together in the time it takes to put together, and thank you guys for doing a phenomenal job, and thank you to Dr. Phil Cassell, who was a driving force of moving that money, so thank you, Phil, and thank you, Ms. Costa.
Not that I need to stand up, but I just wanted to, I'm happy to see in front of me. Again, I need to thank this board and our superintendent for having the insight to look forward. Ms. Dancheck, Russ had worked very hard with the band back when we first were starting to make those moves, the rest of the board, knowing that we needed to follow some money in that direction, supportive of the parents, the children, I cannot say enough. You, Mr. Mayola, made a, made a comment that he would be there for us, it's just the opposite. You need to know that this board is there for you, for your children, for the band, for the football team, for everyone, but it, it just brings, it brings everything to light when you see what you've gone through, and, and the young children now don't realize it now, but when you have their 20th reunion, that's all they're going to talk about. All we're going to talk about is what they did this particular day, and God bless all of you.
No. We had to spend the money on the band, we don't care. It's true, the microphones are dying.
And that's what makes this worthwhile, the dozens and dozens of hours and evenings we spend deliberating, debating, and making those really hard decisions. Tonight is the moment that makes this all worthwhile. It's not a thankless job. We've all done us so proud, and we thank you for representing Nutley and the school in such a positive way. Thank you.
First off, I just want to say, if all it takes is winning a competition like this to get a crowd like this to the board, we really appreciate that.
Let's bring the $10,000 check with you.
Just a couple of things, the superintendent, I wanted to point out, and really, first off, just thank you to everyone who's been involved, and to the students, if you take away some things from this, first and foremost, it takes a tune. I know this board and the boards previous have been strong supporters of the arts, and this has been nominated as a community, one of the best communities for the arts for a number of years. We go out, we try and find the absolute best people and support them, but without the parents, without the teachers, without everyone's support, the trip doesn't even happen, and so it really takes everyone pulling together, and I'm so proud to be part of, and small part, I mean, the Utes especially. Thank you very much for all the tweets and the information, for being as involved, and it is an important thing that we provide these things to you. A second thing I wanted to walk away with hopefully, as Mr. Kazinsky mentioned, you know, 20 years from now, I've watched Mr. Mayola, Mr. Vicarello, and Mr. Wall work constantly, and one of the things I'm always amazed at, and good teachers do this, he keeps coming back to process. You guys had wonderful performances, and he'd say that for the tourists watching, and he woke up, and he always got you to focus on something else, something that could be better, and he did it in a way where you were still smiling, and he wanted to work harder, and it was enjoyable, and so hard work and that process before it got you. The last piece is, the trophies are fantastic, and obviously, I think the board's happy with the $10,000 if you go back to the program. That being said, I hope that you understand that we respect what you did, the commitment you put in, all of your hours of work, and what you did on every single field that you walked onto, regardless of these ones. And Mr. Mayola and your staff, Mr. Williams, the administration, the faculty, all the teachers and the parents that made it possible, and certainly, Mr. Mayola, he'd get a standing ovation worthy of $10,000 and that, so thank you for every negative. Is someone here in the back there, did you find those light switches?
Mr. Laszlo?
Yes, I'm sorry.
When you play this, I just want everyone to know what you're going to, what you're going to hear is the, the band performing at the parade. You're going to hear their introduction to the crowd, and then you're going to hear the band, so it's the whole process for the parade.
Remember how the light switch, if you did the light switch again?
The Nutley Raider Band has had much success over the past 11 years. In the season in 2013, the Raiders have been highly represented in every festival. Most recently, the marching band beat in second place by the Brent Townsend, earning Best Visual, Best Colorant, and Best Effect honors.
Best Visual, Best Colorant, and Best Effect honors.
At this time, I ask if we had any of these band members like to say a few words?
Sure, Nick Swed, up here, please. Just for all we know, I think we have seven Nicks in the marching band, so if you ever get, it's any trouble when you're around the marching band, if you just say Nick, someone will show up. This is both our drum major, Nick Sella, and Nick Cortez. Why don't you guys talk to us a little bit about your experience and... So, this is the assistant, he actually did the start.
Well, I tried out for drum major, I didn't even want to do it. I'm not even gonna lie. I did it in total intention of just seeing what it looked like, and felt like, and maybe get it my senior year, I never would have thought this would have happened. This might have been one of the greatest experiences of my life, and I'm only a junior, so I get to do it again next year. I couldn't ask for anything more than that. I'm being in charge of a great group of kids, everyone is so dedicated and always wanting to work hard, couldn't ask for anything more. So, thank you to everyone in the band, thank you to all the parents that support us, thank you, Mr. Maialo, and the rest of the staff, you guys give us the best opportunities every day, thank you.
Yeah, so... To follow that with, thank you for this band, for just being totally amazing and just following everything we wanted to do this year, honestly, like, the same thing Nick said, that when I was a freshman, I honestly did not know that this is where I'd be when I was a senior. This entire program has just made me a totally different person, and through all the groups that I've been with, this is one of the best ones I've been in. And I just want to thank you to Mr. Vigarel, Mr. Maialo, everybody, thank you for making me the person that I am today, and thank you for this whole band, this honesty, and you all, Mr. President, thank you.
Now, I need a second on that motion for a resolution, does someone have a second I could make?
You all second.
Second by Board. Madeline, do you do roll calls?
Mr. Conisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scholera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to, just to give an opportunity to you guys develop, which are a lot of work to do. Okay, guys, let's get our three to this. At this time, we're gonna have our Superintendent give us a report.
If you zoom in towards, she gets closer, just just this. I want to congratulate our new board members, and I want to thank Mr. Scholera for services Vice President, stepping in as necessary, going above the eye of the ear, he already does. My servant, I want to thank Mr. Kazinsky, without your 4:00 AM wake-up calls, and your 2:00 AM, okay, you can stop working now, phone call, I don't know what I've done, but in all sincerity, Charlie, you give everything to the district and the town, and it really is on our work. Just congratulations to everyone on 2014, and I'm excited to carry the growth, the success that we've just witnessed, and all the improvement that's going on in the district from 2014 to 2015. I'm not gonna thank the students again, though I had it in my report, but just gonna thank the board, and you see the looks on the faces of the parents, and the teachers, and the students, this is what we do. We have Lincoln School here, I'm sorry, Raff's School here? Yes. I said Raff in my head, maybe you're not. But to all the teachers, certainly you guys were giving up a nice evening, and you're going to love your party. And you brought the next principal? Superintendent? You didn't say much to Snork.
No, I answered.
I was just, thank you all, I don't know if any of our elementary teachers looked at any of the kids and remembered them from, I mean, what a great feeling is that sometimes I don't see it, so congratulations to all of our teachers. Some important information just coming up, we are wasting no time, going right back to work, our Strategic Plan Communications Team, some important information nights for parents and juniors coming up, demystifying the college application process this Thursday, 7 o'clock, in the high school auditorium. We will be opening our grade book in February at the 7-12 level, so there will be apparent information night on that, the 14th, Wednesday, the 14th, 6:30 in the high school. We have our eighth grade parent scheduling information program, have a January, this, two Thursdays, January 15th and 7th, also the auditorium. A financial aid workshop with Joseph Roberto, he's a Mahesa consultant, national consultant and trainer with over 37 years' experience working on specifically financial assistance parents through the financial aid process, bringing him in. Our YSL bilingual parent advisory committee meets again January 20th, and we have our NJAP program that we've been working on at the elementary level, NJCAP, building sessions happening again in January. So, we're kicking off the year right where we left off, and trying to get the information out there and build more communities like the one that surrounds our marching band. The final piece, Mr. President, is just updating our re-registration. Certified letters are going out tomorrow, we're finalizing the last piece of registration, but to a proximity of anywhere between 90 and 100 students, their parents, their guardians, who have not yet followed or completed the registration process, these letters initiate the official removal of students from our register, from our register, and if there are any remaining errors or something, we're urging them to meet now as the last time you have to contact the registration office and provide the appropriate documentation, because with these letters, the disenrollment process officially begins.
My question on that, let me ask you. So then, if they have not done, if they are legal residents, they have to bring their children?
There's never a time when children...
Well, they have to come in with the information, end their trial, and go back to the school?
Exactly right. These letters do not mean the following day the kids can't return to school again, we're trying to support students, there is a legal process we have to go through to disenroll, but this is the first step in its notification. It also basically informs parents' letters coming out that if you haven't received the appropriate documentation by January 14th, those students will be officially disenrolled.
Okay, we are now coming to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the Board, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all of the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask if you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only if the others wishing to speak have been heard. All statements will be directed to the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that your statement is, if your statement is abusive, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, and redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember that we state your name, your address, and every time, every time you address the Board. Will the first person please step forward on Agenda I of the morning?
Real quick, Mr. President, which of the meetings on Resolution Administration Number One is the budget meeting, but is it April or May?
Mrs. Eames?
The tentative budget will be presented on, adopted on March 1st.
March 1st, that's the tentative budget.
And then the public, the public hearing will be on April 1st.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we're going to, in this section, we will, we're gonna do the resolution now, we close?
Yeah, close.
Okay, we close this, and you want to go to Academic Resolution Number One, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, House Academic Resolution One as written.
Second.
Allen?
Mr. Conisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scholera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky, do you want to administer?
Yes, Mr. President, I move Administration Resolution Number One, adoption of the schedule of meetings.
Second.
Madeline?
Mr. Conisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scholera?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
And Mr. Ferr?
Yes, Mr. President.
Hang on a second.
To termance Resolution, Finance Resolution One, to read Primary Signatory, Thomas Spazada, President, Alter, Alter Signatory, Charles Kazinsky, Vice President.
Do you have something to make a motion to move forward with the Finals Resolution number nine? Sir. Assistant? Sir. Maialo?
Mr. Conisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Scholera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Okay, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications, again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me, same as above, and anyone else, if you need anything to say, that's the time.
Good evening, Mr. President, Alan Thomas, 108 Kinder Street, didn't think I was gonna come and not say anything.
It's nice to see you back.
No, thank you, thank you. Actually, Mr. President, I just came to offer my thanks to Mr. Kazinsky for his two years as President of Board Education. I'm one of those people who have to say I was wrong, because I was not in favor of Mr. Kazinsky being the Board President, because I was getting tired from one year of already hearing him say, back when I was on the Board, back in the 1840s.
It was actually 1911.
But one of the things I've observed in the past two years, that if there was ever a more forward-thinking, wise, progressive leader for our Board Education at the time, it was Charlie Kazinsky, and I am just, just so happy I was wrong. And he was terrific, he didn't take a lot of crap from me, because he's always open-minded, he always listened to what people had to say, he'd scurry around the sides, he'd work behind the scenes, and he supported our Superintendent, but it was important to support him, particularly on the academic issues. And I couldn't be more proud of, to say Charlie was my friend, and I'm so delighted that the rest of the Board joins in honoring him for his two years. Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Thomas, I was wrong also, because you and I have seen, I think before, might have seen differently on some issues, but after talking with you, meeting with you, and realizing that I was wrong also. So I do appreciate your help and your guidance, and I think the district is stronger for having people like you with your input.
Okay, any other buses I could be heard? Seeing none, we're gonna go to any old business?
Yes, Mr. President, I, we've been discussing the buses, can we get any kind of update on where we might be with the buses, relocation of them?
Well, let me just maybe, Sal, can you give us a update on the IC contract?
Well, I put a phone call, I'm going to talk to Father Joe Ferraro of the Holy Family, who's now in charge there, and apparently, Karen, do we know where the contract was sent to, was it sent to North, or was it sent to Holy Family here in Elk? Because that may, that may be, you know, the reason why it's difficult to know who was the contract we sent back.
The contract was mailed to Father Joe, as well as to the other side.
Can we resend that again, to make sure, because it is a little conflict whether he received it, so can we? Can we tomorrow send it and then make sure they got it?
Okay, perfect.
Anyone else, any old business? Any new business? Mr. Scholera?
Kind of going off, so first, I'd just like to thank Charlie for serving as the President, I think that I enjoyed working under him a lot, I have been with the National League, Russ, for the two years, I think they worked well together, and I'd like to congratulate you as the new President, continuing on what's been built over the past few years, it's, I think, children have been working, I think things have been dealt with properly, and just let this all continue, thank you.
And all the members?
I would just like to say, it's the Board, it's the Board, I know, we all work, this is the Board, and I can say it again to Mr. Thomas, and I know he's tired of hearing it, this Board works better than many Boards that I've served on before, since Abe Lincoln and I were here together, but this Board is this inclusive, that has nine, in my opinion, nine alpha personalities that all come together and get the job done from now on. personalities that, that all come together and get the job done from nothing, and it's just, it's just good to be part of this board, no matter who's sitting up front.
And at that signal, to make that, uh, I'd like to say that, um, I may be the president today, and I'll be running the meetings, but again, with Charlie's assistant and the board, the way we're running, everything's gonna remain the same, so I don't see, uh, you know, anything changing. Uh, I see us heading forward, uh, with our superintendent, and I'm sure any bumps in the road will get through, as we always do, and, uh, so I'd like to say that we're going to continue on Charlie's path that he started us. As our new superintendent?
As a superintendent.
As a board, Charlie, as a superintendent, as a, uh, president of the board, you set a good precedent, and we're gonna follow it.
Everybody gonna call me at 7:00 in the morning?
I don't wanna be doing any of those 7:00 hour, you know?
Best time I have talked?
My, my moving time is, my moving time is from 5:30 to 9:00, that's when I get all my calls and work done.
Okay, can I get a, uh, I think that's it now, will you motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second? Home of favor?